I'd like to bring the meeting to order. We'll start with public comment. Anybody has a comment they'd like to make publicly to the board? If you would, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You come through the podium, please. Face the board and you have three minutes to make your statement. So, do we have anybody? Quiet group tonight? Okay, we'll move ahead. We'll move ahead with Race Track Public hearing.
It's that time of year again. Joe Bassett, General Manager of the USA Speedway. I know you've got your packets and it has the detailed schedule. And this year I did something a little different, give you an explanation of what each date and what we're looking to do. I don't know if it's easier for you to ask your questions, if you want me to go through the whole schedule and the explanations of what works for you best.
Well, just tell us what your plan is for this.
Well, our plan is we want to start racing in May this year. April never works. It's either too wet, whatever. We always come in changing dates or whatever. So, we want to start out with, well, we're calling May Madness, a Saturday/Sunday show with a test and tune Friday night, similar to Oktoberfest setup. And then go into Memorial Day weekend with Monster Truck Show on Saturday and Sunday. On the following weekend, we'd open with our season opener, do our normal Friday night racing through the last Friday night in August. And then we would do Oktoberfest and our demolition derby like we've done in the past. The only thing we've added to it is we'd like to add the Rusty Wallace driving experience twice this year. And we'd like to move our flea market from November to the first weekend in May.
Questions, comments, discussion?
Please chief here, any comments?
No, sir.
Archie?
No.
You thought, anything?
Okay, excellent. The only thing is, can we ask the chief a question? So, the sound issues we had this last season, those have all been taken care of?
Correct.
That's good.
Yes.
And they seem to be compliant?
Absolutely. Anytime, the runs have been great to work with. Anytime I've got an issue, if I've heard a car on track during practice, if I mention, hey, it sounds a little loud, they're right out there taking care of it.
Okay.
It's been great.
That was my only question. Thank you, sir.
No other issues?
So, I just want to make the board aware of a couple of things.
Yeah, sure. I have a couple more things I want to go to, so.
Yep, which is this early date, May 5th, for the flea market. The board, I believe, can waive this, but the Race Track Board states that automotive-related flea markets shall be scheduled on the third Sunday of May, June, and July, and August. And this is not the third Sunday of May. However, if the board wishes, I believe that you can waive it back. The other thing I just want to point out to you, if you look over on the right-hand column of the spreadsheet at the Race Track prepared, there are a number of dates, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, where they are asking to exceed the eight hours.
Yes. Traditionally, we've done that for Oktoberfest. We'd like to do that for the May Madness show. If you notice, we haven't put in a lot of rain dates. Our philosophy is if that's a date we're going to race, we're going to do our best to get it in. And if we have to put it to another race date, that's what we'll do, or we'll cancel the event altogether. So, it just gives us a couple hours insurance policy. The other one is for Isma Night. I'd like to start practice an hour early if I could to make sure we get done in a reasonable hour because of how low those cars can be. I don't want to be running them at 11:30 at night. Yep. But the Oktoberfest extension is what we've done the last few years.
Please go to the podium. Hi, my name is Corinne George. I live at 36 Tammerack Road in Lee. Our neighborhood abuts the racetrack. My children love the racetrack. We go often. I do have a concern with the addition of the May events. The May Madness will potentially be the test and tune Friday night and then running 10 hours on Saturday and 10 hours on Sunday. So, that's essentially a whole weekend that the racetrack is going. And as abutters, it's very difficult to have outside family time. And then it's followed immediately, the very next weekend, the holiday weekend, with another two-day events, both 25th and 26th. And I think that our neighborhood, like I said, abuts it, and that really impacts our quality of life, that that's two weekends now, that we are not able to be outside. And that has a concern in addition to the hours that it's increasing on those days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry?
Hi, I'm Linda Khan. I live on Tammerack Road as well. And I just want to say that I do have concerns about the extended hours and, again, having races on both consecutive weekend days, that usually we plan to have any kind of get-together or outing on the opposite day that they're not racing. And not only is it the four weekend days with the May being consecutive, but if you look like October, and they are rain dates, but it pretty much Friday, October 18th, Saturday, October 19th, the 20th, the 25th, the 26th, the 27th, it's kind of now that whole fall time when you're still outside that, you know, I can't plan anything because I'm concerned of their times, of how loud it's going to be. And saying that they're going from eight to 10 hours, it's 25% increase. And I just want to say that, you know, I bought my land. I knew the racetrack was there. I knew what we had for an agreement for the town. But they bought their land and they knew there was an agreement, too. And yet, over the 23 years that I've lived here, little by little, they have gotten more and more and more, and I haven't. Every time they get, I lose. They're, you know, they're one private business. There are dozens and dozens of families that this affects. And they always come and say, you know, oh, this is my business. This is how I make my money. But everyone else pays money. I'm paying taxes. I should be able to enjoy my land. And I realize there are times when I won't be able to. And I agreed to that when I purchased my land. But I am really getting frustrated that the town is not protecting on this. And I think that they have the ability to. When this contract was written many years ago, I think somebody was very wise and put the word welfare in and gave the selectmen the opportunity and the authority to use welfare as one of the judgments on whether or not they accept the schedule each year. And I hope that you look back and see why this was written instead of just thinking of this as, you know, their dollars amount. And I understand why they're doing it. It's dollars. But I'm paying dollars, too. And I agreed to pay a certain amount of taxes all along, knowing that there were certain restrictions. But my restrictions are increasing. There are more times I can't use my land. There are more things they're asking. And this is not going to be the last year. This is just going to be, this year is what they're going to increase. And so, if they increase their hours 25% on five days, which is what, 20% of their time, next year, how much are they going to increase? And I'd love to actually look back and see from the 20 years ago, what they had to what they have now, and that I really am asking the selectmen to use their power, their authority that was given to them in this contract, that the racetrack is new going into, to make sure that they limit them so that we may be able to use our land and not be always giving them and limiting us.
Jeff LaBia, 42 Tammerack. I also pay taxes. I also work at the track. We have a very limited time to make money. And we're actually running less races this year than we did in previous years. And as far as the noise goes, I can sit here and complain about noise in Tammerack all day long. I can talk about your husband running his track dump. But when it's winter time and you guys get out on your snowmobiles, it's okay to ride the trail over to the track.
Sir, you need to address your comments to the board or not in public?
Excuse me. Well, I'm just saying, and I think my point's getting through here. But, you know, they don't mind going over with the snowmobiles and riding around in the park and watch during the winter and everything. It's fine then. But when we want to make money and doing our racing and everything, there's always been a problem. I'm tired of that. This is ridiculous. The track has been there for many, many years. People come in, they're new, they know the track's there. What's the big deal? Just because we've asked to extend some hours doesn't mean we're going to use all those hours. But it gives us enough time. If we have a rain shower, we can dry the track. Then we can make it safe for the competitors and we can get back out there and get this show done. We try to complete these shows in a timely fashion. And I'm tired of the neighbors complaining and whining and crying all the time about this. Enough is enough. I pay taxes, too. Okay? I need to make a living as well. What am I supposed to do? Lose my house? Lose my property? And everything that I protested? My blood, my sweat, my tears, and everything? I've had enough. I really have. And like I said, we're asking for less races. We're not even running the amount that we can run. So, I would ask that you think about this a little bit further. But like I said, wintertime, it's okay for everybody else to ride snowmobiles and have fun over there. But when it comes time for our business to run, it's a different story.
I'm going to cut you short there.
Karen Rossi, 38, West Mill Pond Road. I'm going to direct abutters to the racetrack as well. When I bought my property in 1999, I was told that the racetrack was 23 days a year, which I believe is consistent to this year's schedule. And as far as the hours of operation, I would much personally rather than go later at night than another day because I'm already asleep come 10, 11 o'clock. It doesn't matter to me if it goes to midnight or not. But the 23 race days a year, I would much prefer than stick to the 23 and go later on a couple other days.
Okay.
So, my point is, I don't think it's changed since 1999 when I bought my property.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
I have a further question. When you talk about the ones in red here are the extended times, and let's say they get rained out, does those 10 hours extend over to the rain dates? Or do they become regular?
For the Oktoberfest, that's a little time in the past. And in the last 12 years that I've worked for the track in one form or another, I can only think of about three times we've even gone to a rain date for Oktoberfest. And that's why there's not a lot of rain dates in here. We want to be able to say, these are the dates and nothing, people don't have to worry about it. That's why, other than the Rusty Wallace experience, there's only data in September. We're not racing in September. We're not racing in April, which we could. It's still the same 23 dates. We've asked for some insurance to try to make sure we can get the big shows in on those dates and not have to move them. The May Madness especially, if it looks like it's going to rain Sunday, we're going to do our best to get the show in all on Saturday and not even race Sunday. That's the main reason why it asked for the extension, so it's not a rain date, so it's not, well, we won't get it in that weekend, so we'll put it to another weekend. And the neighbors can bank on, that's the schedule, there's no changing it. The only reason we put rain dates in for Oktoberfest is it's one of our biggest shows of the year and it's at the end of the year. There's nothing to bump it into on a regular show to make it up later.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, which of these is correct? Because they're a little bit different. On the 16th, it's Friday, August 9th. It says nine and a half hours, but if you look on this sheet, it says 3 to 11:30.
Yeah, I put 3 to 11:30 because the ordinance is written, we can't start a race after 11:30. We can go until midnight if the race started before that.
So, which one is right? Because this one says it's nine and a half hours. This one says 3 to 11:30.
It's eight and a half.
It's eight and a half. The only way would be the full nine hours if we had a race started before 11:30 and we'd have to finish it by midnight.
Okay.
And Tom's right on the phone with me if we go past 11:30. So, we're on the same page of when that race will end and get all the cars off before midnight.
So, this one should be eight and a half, not nine and a half?
I don't have that one, so I don't know. I just.
Okay. Anybody?
On the Thursday night, July 4th race, I suggested to Mr. Bassett that they send out a mailing to the town residents at their cost because of the last time that the board approved a race on a Tuesday night, specifically the town hall had a lot of calls not knowing about that. So, I suggested that they send out a mailing at their expense to let everybody know that there's going to be a race on a Thursday night instead of a Friday night and that they're going to have fireworks because that will help us with the complaints or people not knowing.
And they agree to that?
Um, no. But maybe you can make them.
Well, I see heads going.
Norm and I have talked about that. We have discussed that we'd do something to make sure that everybody would know if this gets approved. Because that's my next question I had. You had a chance to read what we'd like to do for the 4th of July.
Anything? All right, thank you very much. We're going to make a motion to approve the schedule. Hmm? A little motion. Thank you. I'm going to accept the Lee USA Speedway's 2019 proposed operations schedule and grant them a license subject to the conditions imposed by the Lee Racetrack Ordinance, including inspections by the building inspector, fire chief, police chief, and submission of certificate of insurance to the town administrator. One second?
One second. And part of the discussion now, Julio said we'd have to waive.
Well, by accepting this schedule, you're waiving certain things that are contained within the ordinance. Specifically, those dates where they want to extend it past eight hours and the May 5th flea market.
So, it's supposed to be, what is this, the third Sunday?
Third Sunday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ooh, the Budget Committee. Are we ready?
Hello, my name is Tom Rock. I'm the chairman of the Budget Committee this year. And we are, I can get a little closer to that. I am here to give our recommendations to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
All right. So, I'm just doing the highlights and obviously I'm not going through every line item. First, recommending funding of the Stratford County Regional Planning Commission for this year, but review it again next year to consider eliminating the funding. This recommendation is based on the fact that the planning and zoning administrator does not believe that the town gets its money's worth from the commission. However, it appears that there may be some other town entities that use the commission. So, we decided to continue funding for this year and review that again next year for elimination. We recommend funding of a full-time police position, a full-time and part-time fire position. And if the funding isn't in the budget, then we are recommending that you put it in three separate warrant articles for the town citizens to vote on. If the full-time police position is approved, then we suggested that you reduce the overtime pay by $5,000 to 10. If it's not approved, then keep it at the 15 that we have it. Recommend that the board of selectmen review the police department wages and increase upward as appropriate. We're recommending to the board of selectmen not funding the full-time position at the transfer station, but increasing the part-time hours and increasing wages of the part-time personnel as needed. Or look into a possible reduction of open hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays to get them the amount of personnel and hours needed to operate the, this transfer station. Recommend to the board of selectmen this year that the agricultural commission is zero-funded. This recommendation was based on the fact that they have not used the money that the town has appropriated in previous years. And their current amount should be able to cover any efforts that they wish to undertake this upcoming fiscal year. Recommend to bring to the board's attention that they should treat all sick leave time for all employees the same. The staff already gets long-term and short-term disability, and the need for, to provide unlimited sick leave is no longer warranted. So, just to review that. Recommend approval of the budget for 4.8 million.
For what? 4.8? Okay. Question, discussion, ma'am?
Do you want copies of what he just suggested?
Yes.
Could you send the summary to the chairman?
I have a couple. There's two copies right there of what I just did. Is that okay? Or I can send it to you, too?
No, it's all right.
I already have one, so I don't need one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay? Thank you. Julie Glover. Town Administrator, here up.
Thank you. So, the first item is for the board to consider, and an application for the position of cemetery trustee. As you know, we now have an opening. We received one application, which is Donna Eisenhardt. And I believe the other two cemetery trustees are here tonight. If you have any questions for them, although I do believe that they are both in favor. This is Eisenhardt's application.
Yes, we do. We fully endorse. Jan Neal, 46 Wednesday Hill, cemetery trustee chair. And we do fully endorse Donna to take over the current vacant position. She actually has been a trustee in the past, and she has wonderful knowledge to bring to the table with us, and we look forward to serving with her.
Wonderful. Great.
So, I'm just going to be a little quiet here. I'm sorry. She got cursed.
We have a lot to sign tonight. I'm just going to hold off until we have the consent agenda for all the documents the board needs to sign.
Sounds good.
So, we can move this along.
Okay. Do you need a motion to approve it?
All right. We need to make a motion for it.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. I move to appoint Donna Eisenhardt to serve as cemetery trustee until March 2020. Can I get a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Da-da.
Thank you.
Lee Circle Water Agreement.
So, as the board may recall, we've been engaged in many meetings and discussions with the town of Durham, devoted to the extension of the Durham water line, Durham UNH water system water line, to the Lee Traffic Circle in order to solve a problem of the state DES where they now have to treat and monitor for the NTVE. So, the last time I brought this to the board, the board requested that I review it with the town's attorney, which I had done. In addition, I kept the town's engineer in Durham, Lieutenant Price, is what we've been doing. So, that the document that you see in the packet tonight is essentially the document that we are now asking the re-select board to approve. It's my understanding that Ms. Talon will then present it to the Durham Town Council at their January 7th meeting, hopefully for approval. If the two bodies approve this agreement, then Mr. Sellig and I execute the agreement and we move forward. So, does the board have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm going to read the council. What are we giving up? Are we giving up anything from the previous document?
No, we are proposing to give up the 15%. As you may recall, the 1984 agreement gave us a 10% reserve of the water that came out of the Lee well. And under certain circumstances, the well had to produce, I think it was at least 700,000 gallons per day. We would then be entitled to 15%. We're proposing to eliminate the 15% for two reasons. One, the engineers don't believe that the well is ever going to produce 700,000 gallons, so it becomes a weak point. And secondly, with this agreement, what we are gaining is all of the water, not all of the water, water that is available to lead users through the entire UNH Durham water system. So, in other words, they don't just get the water that's coming out of the Lee well. Once they're connected, they have access to the entire system. So, for example, if the Lee well.
Dries up.
Dries up. The properties identified in the attachment A still get water through the Durham UNH water system. Other than that, I don't believe that we're really giving anything up. Durham did agree to take the language out that stated that lead users would be charged a surcharge. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that means that they're never going to put that into their water rates, but it's not in the agreement. The agreement says that whatever their water rates are, that's what the lead users are going to be charged.
Can you go over in terms of, because right now, they did a study in terms of potential businesses that are going to be attached to this versus how much water is coming out? If somebody wants to attach afterwards, can they say, no, there's not enough water coming in? Or how, how are they going to handle that?
Can I ask a question that goes on with that?
Sure.
There's just something about this that confuses me in the terminology. A well doesn't produce water, right? I mean, you draw water, draw out of the well. You draw 1,000, it produces 1,000. If you draw 10,000, it produces 10,000. So, I'm trying to understand, as the population grows, I mean, if they say it will never do 700,000, that's just based on how many users you have on the line, is it not? I mean, it could go to 700,000, or is it absolutely incapable of producing so?
No, but the Lee well, we'll use the word produces water, has water, based on the amount of rainfall. And so, the engineers have studied it, and they believe that the safe yield is between 360,000 and 648,000 gallons per day. But they believe that it's at the lower level right now. So, what will happen is that all of the properties that are currently attached to the system and have been attached. that into their water rates, but it's not in the agreement. The agreement says that whatever their water rates are, that's what the lead users are going to be charged.
Can you go over it in terms of...because right now, they did a study in terms of potential businesses that are going to be attached to this versus how much water is coming out? If somebody wants to attach afterwards, can they say, "No, there's not enough water coming in," or how...how are they going to handle that?
Can I ask a question that goes along with that? There's just something about this that confuses me in the terminology. A well doesn't produce water, right? I mean, you draw water, draw out of the well. You draw 1,000, it produces 1,000. If you draw 10,000, it produces 10,000. So, I'm trying to understand, as the population grows, I mean, if they say it'll never do 700,000, that's just based on how many users you have on the line, is it not? I mean, it could go to 700,000, or is it absolutely incapable of producing so?
No, but the Lee well, let's use the word "produces" water, has water, based on the amount of rainfall. And so, the engineers have studied it, and they believe that the safe yield is between 360,000 and 648,000 gallons per day. But they believe that it's at the lower level right now. So, what will happen is that all of the properties that are currently attached to the system and have been attached since the 80s, and then the additional, it used to be 10, I think it's now 13, 14, what we are calling the MTBE properties, once they're attached to the system, they're attached to the system. And whatever the Lee well produces or doesn't produce is irrelevant. Should someone come along after this agreement and after the system is extended, they're going to have to go to Durham and say, "Hey, can we connect to your system?" And then Durham will have the ability to say yea or nay. It's supposed to be based on how close the Lee properties are to that 10%, if that makes any sense. I think right now, I forget the exact number, but I think what they've estimated for the MTBE properties isn't even close to 64,000 gallons.
But that's the high side?
That's the...yes.
That's the high side.
Yes, that's the high side.
So potentially, somebody who is not one of the MTBE properties can request it, and they can say, "Nope, that's the limit," or they can say, "Yes."
Or they can say, "Yes."
And it's their cost to attach to it.
Correct.
Right now, the MTBE properties are probably part of the project.
Yes, and so the state DES is connecting those.
They did a build-out analysis early on, and if every parcel along both sides of Route 4 build out at the, let's call it the worst case, it's about 8,000 gallons a day over what we...the 15%. So if that Route 4 is built out both sides, every parcel hooks up to the well, we're just over what we're allowed.
Do you mean the 10%?
The 10...excuse me, the 10%. So chances of that happening are...
But define just the ones at the circle, or along...
All along Route 4, starting from the well on both sides. They did the...I met with Weston and Sampson, and we did a build-out of what's basically the worst-case scenario, what they'll withdraw from that well, and it was just over the daily allowed amount.
Okay.
But that's...you say from the well, that's to the circle, or how far does that go?
Believe they...Julie, do you remember if they went on the other side of the circle or just to the circle?
I thought they went on the other side of the circle.
I don't remember if they hooked up Market Basket or not, but...
Okay. Can you tell me, continues down Route 4, like to the funeral home?
It doesn't go as far as the funeral home. It goes far...as far as Sterling Apartments, those two apartments.
Okay. Across from the systems offices.
Correct. Systems offices in there.
Okay. So it kind of stops there.
Stops at the town line.
Well, is it Purdy on...
Purdy's both land or...
Okay. No, not Durham.
I'm sorry, Barrington, Leon Barrington, sorry.
Durham's big enough.
Sorry.
It's the other way.
But it doesn't include Purdy, yes.
I read through, I think you're right.
Okay. All right. I have a motion.
I move to approve the Lee Circle water agreement as presented, and authorize the town administrator to execute same, provided that there are no substantive changes or substantive changes made by the Durham Town Council. Second.
Second.
Okay.
He seconded it.
He seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is just a brief update on the TPD project. The fixtures have been ordered. We are still hoping to get them installed, both at the transfer station and at the public safety complex by the end of the year. We're just kind of going back and forth with the company and trying to work out a schedule that's going to work for them and work for us, so as to be as least disruptive as possible, especially in this building, trying to work out the meeting schedule and the daytime schedule. So that's still a work in progress, but we still are beaming to have the project complete by the end of the year.
So can you give me a breakdown in terms of the project cost and how much utilities are...
The project cost is actually going to be a bit less than what we had originally talked about and what the board had originally approved. Originally, the total cost was going to be $27,338, and it's coming in now at $22,070 because the incentive amounts are greater than had been originally proposed.
So that's from co-op and commercials?
Oh, no, this is all co-op.
It's all co-op?
All co-op. We wouldn't be able to do it, it was two power companies.
Oh, okay.
No, it's all the co-op.
Okay.
So, that is moving forward, and I've advised the energy committee on that.
SDC property.
Yes, we are now the proud owners of the parish house and the surrounding land. We had the closing on Friday. It all went well. I believe that he was recorded that morning. Mr. Banks brought keys over, so we now have the keys to the parish house, and it's now listed with Primex as an insured property. After a great deal of back and forth and work, it's all set.
Last meeting, I think it was last meeting, Mr. Bullock came and stated or presented
to the board that he would like to see a change in the town's policy relative to the overtime is handled during a week with a holiday. So I drafted the policy that was in the packet, ran it by all the department heads, so if the board doesn't have any questions or concerns at this time, the only thing that we need to discuss or just the board needs to decide is what the effective date is going to be. In other words, do you want it to be retroactive to, I think the first snowstorm was around Veterans Day, and then there was certainly the snow during the week of Thanksgiving? Or do you want it to just be effective from this date forward?
November 1st.
Here's such a pushover. What was I going to do today? I would say we've recalculated all that stuff.
Wonderful.
My heart is with the finance officer, I'm sorry.
I know it is. But at the same time, the people are out on the road, so I would go November 1st.
I think so, too.
I'll remember this.
I know you will.
And so will Joanne.
I know, I understand.
She's okay with it.
Oh, she's okay with it? Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
Are you changing your mind?
Yeah, I'm changing mine.
Motion to approve the revised personal health policy as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, it's retroactive to...
All in favor?
Retroactive to...
Probably November 1st, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Killing me smalls. Best movie ever. Next item is the...we issued a RFP for waste hauling services. As you may recall, through co-op, the truck got sold. We didn't have that available to us anymore. We've been doing it, we've been using Shipyard through the Lamprey co-op. The board had wanted us to put an RFP out, which we did. Results are in the packet, I believe. Mr. Manekin is here.
He's in the corner.
And I don't know whether he wants to speak to this. I believe that his recommendation is to accept the bid by Shipyard Waste Solutions. They are the one.
With Shipyard, we have a good relationship with them for all these months, and they're reliable, and we've got, you know, a good close relation. We communicate with each other, and if we need something the next day or that minute, whatever, they'll be right there if we need it. And besides, we can use our own cans, and if you go look at the other ones like Waste Management, they'll use their cans, bring them on site. I'd rather see us use our own because we purchase a lot of money for those cans. So, the...also too, during the hauling part of it, certain items like maybe the construction B that I know, construction B, that we could probably get it down a few bucks if we go right through them directly instead of going to Virgo. So there's advantages on this, so it'll work against with us. So we can also make money, too. If we ever want it, if we slow down on cardboard or anything like that, they'll give us, they'll come down and drop off a container for us. We tried this already, and it worked out pretty well. Just matters of staff and making sure we can do that. That'll increase our shipping of, say, cardboard more and more each time, every couple of months or so. So it'll benefit us in time by using Shipyard.
What's the length of the contract you recommend?
That's up to the board, whether you want to just go into a one-year contract or whether you want to lock us in for two, three years.
They're pretty...they're flexible, so whatever you like to do. So it's at this point. So where this stays, according to the dates, are up to 2021, but that's a couple of years. But it's whatever you like to do. Because I asked him about that on the phone today. And I asked him, too, if there's any other percentage of increase, but there is not for the next few years that I'm aware of at this point, so...
Well, I'd rather do it for the three years because, you know, prices are not going down like they've ever up till...
No, excuse me one thing. It's, we are actually paying 252 right now, so I tell you right there that if we're dealing with them at 238 for pretty much everything here, plus going to South Brewerich, that's for light iron for...but we end up taking it to Harding anyway, so we're not going to be paying that full price. There's an extra amount of miles on that.
Which one are you? Which Shipyard for three years?
Shipyard for three years.
Okay. All right. And told me when will this be effective?
Probably towards the end of this year, probably another couple of weeks.
We said it's going to be January 1st.
Yeah, we gave Lamprey that time, right then at the last, 2019.
Were you able to contact Shipyard and see if they could change? Because they were billing Lamprey for three and a quarter.
Yes, they are.
So, and they...did you get them down for three and a quarter for that?
For us?
Yeah.
I worked with them, you know, chomping out the pencils and stuff if you want, we work into this, so...
All right, well, that was a question when we met with the Lamprey people, that they were billing us three and a quarter for...
Well, that's...I think that's going to stick. I think that's going to stick there because that was through Lamprey, Shipyard to Lamprey. You know, and it's...so it's when they did that branch back in, when they separated, sold the vehicle in June, they didn't mention to us, and so I could do a little more digging on that, saying that paying the difference. It seems like now we're paying the difference, an extra few thousand bucks. It doesn't, it's some reason down that line there, it doesn't make sense, but the numbers they're paying, they were charging two and...three and a quarter, and we were actually getting billed 252. Lamprey was billing us 252.
All right.
That's what I kind of thought, that's what I figured out.
Looking to that. The other thing, so now that we have a cheaper rate, can you do a recalculation for your budget line for that particular haul?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because you're in there at 38, so it sounds like you can reduce that some or some.
I think so with these numbers, so yeah. Yeah, we'll see why we can.
So if you can do that by...
What?
Our next meeting is the second.
January 2nd.
Hey, let me get some numbers together, and I'll be like...
Okay. Move to authorize town administrator in our contract with Shipyard Waste Solutions for MSW, sorry, C and D and Glass Hauling Services, town of Lee for 10, 3 years. Can I get a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in pass.
Thank you. Last item that I just want to review with the select board, sometime this week, we need to send a notice to Foster's for publication before the bond public hearing. And so I sent to you last week the verbiage for both the public hearing notice and the draft warrant article, although I'm less concerned tonight about the warrant article than I am about the public hearing notice. So, I based the amount of the proposed bond on what the board had voted on on November 8th. And I know that since that time, LaValle Bransinger has put together numbers so that the total project cost is less than what the board voted on on November 8th. I just have some concerns relative to the source of additional funds for the project that had been identified, again, in a spreadsheet that was prepared for that November 8th meeting, and there's a very brief summary of it that I handed to you at the beginning of the meeting. Two concerns or questions that I have. One, is the TCVC thinking that we're going to get grant money even though we are not proposing to renovate any of the older buildings in this first go-round?
No.
Okay. And then, my next question is just a concern because 195, well, more than 195,000, $228,000 had been identified as coming from the town building capital reserve fund, which would, I don't want to say wipe it out completely, but essentially wipe it out completely. And I think that I've expressed to you in the past couple of meetings that, you know, we just don't know with our older buildings when things are going to fall apart and need repair, so we may want to think about maintaining money in the capital reserve fund, and so reduce the amount of money that we plan on using for the town center project.
If you will contain this? Yes, yes. This is the spreadsheet that John has created. John, would you come up and walk us through it if you could? Because TCVC has the same kind of questions, because we are preparing the presentation on the 7th of the bond hearing, so the board and the TCVC have to be on the same page in terms of what they're doing, propose. And John worked out this particular spreadsheet, so the big questions for us is, how much is the bond that we're going to float, and what is the source of funding? And we need to agree on those particular numbers so we can make a proper presentation because we want to be on the same page when we do that presentation.
Good idea.
If you allow John to walk us through this, that'd be great. Thank you.
John Tappin, a member of the TCVC. In this spreadsheet, the numbers you see at the bottom, the 4.345 million, that's the most recent total cost estimate. You might be wondering why that went down almost $200,000 from the previous estimate from what you told...yeah, there are extra copies here.
If anybody wants to...
Anybody wants a copy of what we're looking at. You may be wondering why that amount went down by almost $200,000 from what we told LaValle Bransinger was the budget. And that's because when they presented their preliminary budget to us, the budget that you, the board, looked at for the new construction, they showed $300 per square foot. Plus, in addition, for each new building or addition, they showed site costs separately. And by the board's direction, they were told to...that we wanted to reduce the unit cost of new construction from 300 down to 270. They're now showing that at 270, but included in the 270 is now the site cost of $25 a square foot. So in fact, they actually reduced the unit construction cost from 300 to 255, which is a bigger decrease than we asked for. And that's why this new number comes out, almost $200,000 less than we expected it to because the unit cost for new construction went down by $45 instead of $30. Went down by...
More.
Yeah, $55 instead of $30. So, if we start with the current number of 4.345 million, I have identified four possible funding scenarios. There are two sources, each of which has two possibilities or two conditions. One is the extra amount to take out of the town building's capital reserve fund. The first line shows there is $34,381 in... Plus, in addition, for each new building or addition, they showed site costs separately. And by the board's direction, they were told to, that we wanted to reduce the unit cost of new construction from 300 down to 270. They're now showing that at 270, but included in the 270 is now the site cost of $25 a square foot. So in fact, they actually reduced the unit construction cost from 300 to 255, which is a bigger decrease than we asked for. And that's why this new number comes out, almost $200,000 less than we expected it to because the unit cost for new construction went down by $45 instead of $30. Went down by.
More.
Yeah, $55 instead of $30. So if we start with the current number of 4.345 million, I have identified four possible funding scenarios. There are two sources, each of which has two possibilities or two conditions. One is the extra amount to take out of the town buildings capital reserve fund. The first line shows there is $34,381 in the CIP that is planned for capital improvements at the town center. And those are in the next two years. So if this project goes forward, you would not do those now because you're going to renovate the buildings, it's part of the new project. In addition, over the past, previous fiscal year and this fiscal year, an extra $65,000 each year was added to the town buildings capital reserve fund specifically because of the town project costs of hiring an architect. If you take what we paid the architect the first year and what we expect to pay the architect this year, there is $6,300 left over from that $130,000. So that's one possibility of the extra amount to take out of the capital reserve fund is the 6,300. The other possibility, based on the town administrator's recommendation, is that you don't draw the fund down to practically zero, you leave $100,000 in it. So if we take out what we know we're going to spend this year for the architect and what we know we're already spending for the other projects that have been mentioned, and leave $100,000 in, that would be $100,000 available for the next six and a half months. And if no additional money is funded by the voters this coming fiscal year, it would be $100,000 for the next 18 and a half months. So obviously, I think Julie's concerned about drawing it down to practically zero is very legitimate. So that number is instead of being, what is it, 180,000, is 94, almost 95,000. So those are the two alternatives. Do you take out just the amount that was planned for town center project? Or do you take out enough to, as much as you can, but still leave $100,000 in the fund? The other two, the other variable is the library foundation money. Library Foundation has told us that they have approximately $77,000. But that's private money. Right now, there is no documentation that says that that money will be available for this project. So there's two conditions. One is do you count it or do you not count it? And that's how I get the four possible scenarios. The first one is the, I guess you could say, most conservative. It's taking the least amount out of funds and results in a bond of 3.865 million. And you can see the rest of the numbers down to the least conservative, takes the most out, counts on the private money and a bond of 3.7 million. Questions?
I have a question. The 4.3 million contains the contingency in this number, does it not?
Correct.
So we have 430,000, if you would, as a contingency. I think that's right, isn't it? Roughly 10%?
Yeah.
So now we're going to have, we'll have the 430,000 and we need, we want to draw another, put another 100. I mean, how do you draw down on that contingency? I mean, you must, you must kind of be assuming we're going to not only use the contingency, but we might need another 100,000.
The contingency is 395,000.
Okay, 395.
Because it's 1/11 of the total. And contingency would cover, these costs are projected to when are we going to be built. Because there's some uncertainty in what building cost will be a year plus from now. There's uncertainty in what a material is going to cost. We're pretty sure that we're not going to find any surprises on the site, but.
But would you go into the 100,000 that we take out of the reserve fund, would you draw down on it before you draw down on the contingency number or after? In other words, do you have to consume the contingency money before you?
The, what we're looking at now is how much of a bond to take out. When you take out that bond, they give you the money. So that money's in your bank.
But it's got contingency money, the amount has 430,000 to draw down on in case.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. And so you're going to want to spend whatever is earning the lowest rate in the bank first.
Okay, okay.
So depending where you put the bond money.
But you know, you know what I'm saying. I mean, the question is really now, you have 307,000 as a contingency, which to me says we may or may not need this.
Correct. Two things. One, we have asked the architect to provide some additional information on alternatives. To date, we have nothing on if we were to do upgrades, like better insulation or a more efficient heating plant, how much extra would it cost, what would the payback be? So what's being built is minimum code for now, 2009 energy code. Also, in the design, basis of design summary, there are 33 items that are listed as by owner. Some of those are not important and some of them are very small, like a bicycle rack, but none of those have a price attached yet. And some of them are 10 or 15 or 20,000, like security cameras for the, all of the buildings. That's not part of this budget. The wiring for it, that's not part of this budget. Some outdoor lighting, not part of this budget. Telephone system for the buildings, not part of this budget.
Okay, let me, let me just interrupt you if you don't mind. If it's not part of the project, when it becomes part of the project, where does the money come from?
The money would either have to come from what you borrowed or what you took from these others. It would be part of, either part of this or part of the.
But I mean, it would, it would come from the contingency money?
Contingency money is not really a, well, it's not really a source of funds. It's a potential expenditure.
It's, it's 10%
Yes.
Of the 4.3 million.
Yes.
So when you do, when you set up the books, you take 430,000 out of this number here and you set it aside as the contingency money. You don't draw down on that money until such time as you burn the first amount, is that correct? In other words, when do you go into the contingency money?
Is your keeping track of your books?
No, exactly, that's my point.
Right now, we do not have a detailed budget of, you know, how much the windows cost, how much of the doors cost, et cetera. But once you have that and you're buying those things, you hope that everything is coming in at the price that you expected. And anything that's not going to come in at the price that you expected, when the builder says those windows or those doors or those lights are no longer available and the only thing we can get in time costs $20,000 more.
Okay. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, John, because I know, I mean, you've just done great work on this stuff. I'm just trying to understand why now we have to move $100,000 or capture $100,000 from the capital reserve fund when you have the, it's beyond the $430,000 contingency that we have to burn.
So you suspend the bond first? Because this Warren article says up to, should say up to. So if you don't need to spend the money from the town capital, town building, you don't spend it? But the thing is.
Okay, but, but are you or are you not sequestering $100,000 out of the capital reserve fund?
Well, depending on which scenario you're talking about, yeah. Yeah. But the thing is that contingency money is for adding and change orders. Something's going to happen. You've built your garage and stuff.
I have.
Stuff happens.
If something happens that makes you burn 430,000 of the contingency and then have to go into the 100,000.
So the other thing to remember is that we are just simply, this discussion was really simply to put before the board what the bond public hearing notice is going to say.
That's correct.
And then the numbers have shifted a little. It's only a proposed amount. Just because we're putting it in the public hearing notice doesn't mean that that's the ultimate number that we're going to end up with. Quite frankly, the numbers could all be changed in the deliberative session.
Absolutely.
This is just the public hearing notice.
But the TCVC needs to know those details to make the presentation.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we don't meet again until, you know, the second, and that's too short of a time. So we need to know from the board in terms of what they're comfortable with in terms of proposing sources of funds other than the bond. And the thing for me is the Lee Building Capital Reserve Fund is a no-brainer, that's a number. The Lee Capital, oh, excuse me, the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund is a no-brainer. The big questions for me is how much do we take out of town buildings, if anything? And the other thing is in terms of the whole library foundation, I do not know how that works. And it's not something that we've done before, but it's probably been done before someplace else. What is the procedure for saying, okay, we're expecting this money, but it's a separate entity? What will the RA say? Do you include it? Do you not include it? And then how do you deal with that afterwards? So I guess that, those are my questions in terms of the third question.
Okay, my concern is sort of something happens that we then need to go to the, to the building, the capital reserve fund, and we don't have now.
Well, you have $100,000. Depending on which one you choose, like if you choose three or four, $10,000 sitting there. That's assuming, I believe, no more money puts in in 2020, no extra $60.
Correct. These, these numbers are based on taking what's in the funds right now, adding on the interest that would be earned from now through the end of the year, and then subtracting out, which is only town buildings capital reserve fund, subtracting out what we know we have to reimburse the town for, for things that it is either already purchased or will be purchasing shortly, like the lights, LED lights. And, and that, whatever amount you're going to take out of these funds, you don't actually take it out of the fund and put it into the bank account that has the bond in it.
No, you don't.
It's just that, that when you need it, that's where it'll be coming from, from those funds.
So my gut feeling is we should go with number four. If we can work out in terms of the library foundation.
If we can work out the library foundation.
Because that's a question I think you're going to have to ask the RA unless you already know.
No, I, and as you said, we're alluded to, we don't control, we don't control that money. I'm not sure that I would, cannot. If it ends up coming in, great, then you don't spend as much as your budget are going to spend, but I'm not sure you want to rely on it.
Because we have to gross budget, whatever the thing is.
Yes, yep.
Then that's number three.
You still, you still on number four?
You know, it's here three or four, it's, we're talking $77,000 is what it should be. So three looks fine. I'd agree to take down the cap reserve fund for the town number. Keep $100,000 in there.
What's in it?
It was 195,000.
195,000.
So if they take out 95,000, it's 100,000.
No, there's 252,000.
Yeah, 252,000. So this probably.
Andy, are you on the foundation or not?
Yes.
Could you speak to this whole, and I don't, I don't know if you, you as a group have talked about it or not, but.
We will need to find out what the procedure would be for the expending that amount of money.
Is that number, I don't know, that might be.
Really, really close to what is expected right now.
But that's not money you have, you have money plus commitments, right?
Yes, some commitments have changed. Some may
Yep.
Come to fruition again with the passage of the Warren article and the bond.
Because that, that number is, if you want to do it. Because they might bring in more money, so then what do you do? So I think we need some kind of direction from the RA or whoever to let us know, because I can't imagine this is the first time this has ever been done in the state of New Hampshire, so. So are we coming to three?
Number three.
So 3,780,000.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Can I ask you a question about the Warren article a little?
Sure.
Did you get any clarification in terms of the whole issue about spending the interest on it?
I passed, put the query to bond counsel and I just haven't gotten a response to it.
Okay, that's fine.
Bond counsel, divide and all that.
Okay.
So just want to discuss with the board how the board feels about closing early on Christmas Eve. I've had a request that I see Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, sorry, New Year's Eve. Closing it free on New Year's Eve, I believe the town clerk, tax collector is already going to close her office at 3 o'clock. It's Monday, so we typically close at 6 o'clock. So just asking, querying the board, just do you feel on that?
Do you get the time off too? Did we get the time off too? So you won't be calling us and asking for anything?
I, I don't know. I mean, something might arise between the hours of 3 and 6 on New Year's Eve.
I don't have any problem with that. We should provide notice and requires, and not surprise.
All right, thank you.
UNH isn't working, but.
No, they're not.
They're all.
They're all.
Oh, yeah.
No, they've still got exams. One day.
Can we also, you mentioned the need prior, can we put up in the town hall that really, because I think we might get some people that want to come in and do something with the town clerk.
Well, we, yes, we will let everybody know, but she wants to close her office early.
I understand that, but if you would ask her, put up notices that she will be.
Yeah, we will do that.
As a request from other side.
Again, I'm just going to suggest to get the hold off until the very, very end, just before we adjourn.
Just sign everything.
Everything is all at the sign and there's obviously a lot of people still here and items of business to get through. If you've wanted to move to accept the consent agenda, that would be fine. I'm just suggesting that we wait until the very end to sign everything.
Okay. Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to move to go into non-public. So I'd like to make a motion, enter into non-public, into non-public session per NHRSA 91 hyphen A colon 3, 2, 1, and A.
It's actually an L.
L, I'm sorry, L.
Yeah, consultation.
Oh, it's an L, I'm sorry.
Consultation with counsel.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Schleckman-Bugbee.
Yes.
Schleckman-Lacour.
Yes.
Thank you. Little question, Brown.
Yes, we did that.
Didn't we?
It has to be done out here.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me have my paper back before I go with it. What do you do with it?
This?
Yeah. So I want to make a motion to seal the minutes.
For the conversation with legal counsel.
Yeah, the conversation with legal counsel.
All in favor? Uh, roll call?
You, little song.
No. What, everybody what?
Second.
Second, thank you.
Roll call.
I got a second already. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Schleckman-Bugbee, yes.
Yes.
Schleckman-Lacour, Stryphon-Brown, yes.
All in favor? Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Blue moon, why do you miss me so dearly? Blue moon, I'm in love with you.
Five exams on Monday, and it's been good.
I thought you started going. What are you doing?
She's been here too long.
I just...
What are you doing?
I don't know. It's warming here.
I thought so.
We're all doing it.
What's the matter? She's trying to burn us out. Going past the hot flash stage, maybe a break, you know? Oh, you passed that already?
They're in their faces.
Oh, jeez.
You think it started burning? It would have been worse.
Yeah, it would.
Doesn't make any difference. We all have to sign it.
Experiencing a bottleneck.
Well, we know who the bottleneck is, so you can't be talking over me. Oop, I don't need to sign it on.
It's just Karen.
It's just Karen.
It's just Karen.
There's another one, just Karen.
That one's just Karen.
That's just Karen.
Yep, we know who the bottleneck is.
It was this one.
We're just like, this is causing problems under EBC. You know who it was, right?
I don't know everybody.
Questions to ask?
Intent to cut.
Intent to cut. So, John, we should be concerned if we see an intent to cut from a certain entity on High Road?
You got it. Should watch out for that.
Who's the owner? I thought we were all... So we're going to get all mixed up? Yeah.
What is this?
Do I get the top parts of it?
Oh, this is the clay deeds.
Okay.
I'm only getting the bottom parts.
Yeah, with the rest...
Sign your name here and I'll fill in the rest of it. Because we should have known when we filled the...
Boom, boom, boom.
Boom, boom. I see, boom. We have a small problem. We did do that one.
Oh.
Citra.
Boy, you're just not kidding, are you?
Hmm?
A lot of papers.
Well, there's a lot of minutes because there's three different reasons.
The burial procedure is a done deal, huh?
Oh, yeah. Here we go. I have two items from miscellaneous, they should be quick.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Two items from miscellaneous.
Huh?
Two items from miscellaneous, I have. Two items from miscellaneous.
Oh, okay.
And that one, good.
Miscellaneous?
Two things. One, we're sending out that postcard tomorrow.
Which looks good.
References, the website, I sent you the link. Hopefully you've taken a peruse. Are you okay with it?
Good.
There shouldn't be anything really controversial, but we want to make sure that you're okay with it before we send it out. So that will go out tomorrow morning. We've had an offer from Paul Gazowski to videotape the bond hearing and create a presentation with the slides, with the video. He's offered to do that. He sent us an email a little while ago. I don't know if we want to officially take him up on that or not, but I thought I'd bring it to this group's attention.
What's the TCVC think about it?
I've been talking about it. But are you okay with it?
I'm fine. If TCVC agrees to it, I'm good.
We meet tomorrow. We meet tomorrow and then Friday.
It used to be part of his job, I understand, at one time.
It used to do those presentations, but he offered to do it, so...
That'll be nice.
I think if we can put that up someplace, I think it will be easier in terms of viewing, especially with the presentation, they can at least see the slides versus wide angle, so...
He's going to do the presentation or just do the graphics, et cetera, et cetera?
He's going to videotape. So what's going to happen is he's going to set up a camera, we're going to give him the presentation, so he's going to videotape it just like we're doing here, but then he's going to edit it so that when we're talking about slide three and, you know, 1, 2, 3, he's going to put those up on the screen, so he's going to edit, so people can actually see them.
Okay.
Because from home, you can't really, you can make out some of the slides, but you can't really see them.
Great, okay.
All right. Gazowski.
Make a motion to adjourn again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.